Good morning. I know there are two other meetings next door, one on betting duty, one on CFA statement, but please try to stay on. We've got a quorum and it's time we invite the administration in first. There are two items today. One, retirement of pre-Euro 4 diesel commercial vehicles, the other one is actually related. Increase in commitment for one-off grants to encourage early replacement of Euro 2 diesel commercial vehicles. As you know, well, if there's a policy change with subsidy or certain things have to be phased out, there would be a lot of views from the sector. And so it's necessary to have a public hearing and allow the sector to air their views. So I'd like to ask members whether you would like a public hearing on the two items. We can take them together. One is on replacement, retirement of vehicles, the other is on a grant, so they are related. So perhaps you could invite the sector to come and give their views. Time, it won't be in one of our regular meetings, we'll have to call a special meeting. Secretariat, you have any slots? Well, perhaps we will give members two free slots to choose from. It's most likely to be Saturday, that's usually when we hold public hearings. Item one on the agenda. We have the secretary, the undersecretary, deputy director of environmental protection, Mr. Andrew Lai, assistant director of EPD, Mr. Mark Hua Chuen, and Mr. Admin Ho, principal environmental protection officer. Let's go straight to the first item. Retirement of pre-Euro 4 diesel commercial vehicles. There are two papers, CB 11003/12 to 13 bracket 01. That's a paper from the administration and there's also background brief, CB 11003/12 to 13 bracket 02. Now, if there is any direct or indirect particular interest, members, please, in accordance with rules of procedure 84, 83A, you must disclose the nature of such interests before you speak on the item in discussion. And members, please also note rules of procedure 84, the provisions on voting on a matter with a direct peculiary interest. We don't need to vote, actually, but still, members, please declare interest in accordance with the rules of procedure. Now, can I invite the administration to take us through the paper? Good morning, Madam Chair, good morning, members. Well, I'm sure you've read the papers, it's covered all the main points, and of course you understand the purpose of the retirement of pre-Euro 4 diesel commercial vehicles is to improve air quality, in particular roadside air quality, so I won't say too much. Now, we are setting aside 10 billion dollars for the scheme, so that we could retire pre-Euro 4 diesel commercial vehicles as soon as possible. We've consulted the sectors, and the response has been positive on the whole. So we would like to have the support of this council and approve the relevant funding application as soon as possible. And we've been exchanging views with the sector over some time now, and there are four areas of concern expressed. First, the excursio payment, how could we balance the aspirations of different parties? The second point is about the phasing out timetable. The third point is the 15-year service life limit for newly registered diesel commercial vehicles. While here, there is a clear view from the sector, there's no objection really. And the fourth point is about transitional arrangements. So we would like to arrive at some sort of consensus with the sector, hopefully then we could implement the scheme in 2014. Any other points from your team know, then we open the floor to questions, members. Mr. Gary Chen, please keep your hands up. If you don't let me know how many are to speak, then I'm not going to set a time limit. Mr. Gary Chen, Quack Hua Keng, Kenneth Chen, Elizabeth Quat Porter, and Mr. Wuchihai. So altogether, six members. And then Mr. Frederick Yehk, he's not a member of this panel, he's at the bills committee, but he will be joining us. And Deputy Chairman, do you wish to speak? Okay, so a total of seven members. Five minutes each, perhaps? Mr. Chen, Gary Chen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Madam Chair. I am supporter of improving roadside air quality. 10 billion dollars is not a small sum, though. If we spend this money well, of course, we could improve air quality, but if we don't spend it wisely, properly, then we would have spent the money without achieving the effect. It would be like the previous two schemes. So we must always bear in mind the policy objective here, Secretary. It's about improving air quality, it's not about replacing vehicles for the sake of replacing vehicles. But I would say the scheme is aimed at replacing vehicles for the sake of replacing the vehicles. Why would I say that? Because for the newer vehicles with less pollution, like the Euro 3, Euro 4 vehicles, they get more subsidy. But then for the more polluting vehicles, like the Euro 1, Euro 2 vehicles, they are getting less grants. So are you trying to recycle second-hand vehicles, or you really want to retire old vehicles and improve air quality? I think you're putting the horse before the cart here, that's the first point. Secondly, don't try to drive out small businesses, especially single-vehicle owner driver, in the name of environmental protection. It's important to protect the environment, but we must be careful, we don't give all the subsidy to the larger consortia. And you see, it's actually the bigger transport operators which own the newer vehicles. And for the small vehicle owners, if they could afford to replace their vehicles, they would have done so. Some groups came to see us, they're still driving vehicles 10, 20 years old, they know it's highly polluting, they would like to replace the vehicles, but they couldn't afford it. So I hope the administration wouldn't just devote most of the money to the less polluting vehicles, like the Euro 3, Euro 4 vehicles. Yes, I support the principle of polluters pay, but even if you give them a 30% grant, that means the drivers still have to pay 70%. That's odd. You might recall, Madam Chair, last year, when we talked to the bus companies about some retrofitting catalytic converters, the government gave them 500 billion dollars. And then when power companies retrofit dieselization devices, they also get subsidy from government, a full subsidy, in fact. So how come now the government is trying to phase out the pre-Euro, Euro 1 and Euro 2 vehicles? You are being so tough, and you're trying to target the small operators in the sector. As for the bigger groups, which could well afford to replace their vehicles, you're being generous to them, why are you doing that? Secretary?
Mr. Chen, as far as I understand it, pre-Euro, Euro 1, Euro 2, Euro 3 vehicles. Now, we have all sorts of owners of these vehicles at every level. And for all these types of vehicles, there are large operators, there are also small operators, like a single-vehicle owner driver. So it's hard to generalize. And we must not confuse the scheme with the other two schemes. The other two schemes were voluntary in nature, so we see that they weren't so effective. But this time around, we're saying that we are going to increase the excursio grant, and we need this grant to be linked to a piece of legislation, so that we could achieve the purpose of improving air quality. So the objective is well-defined. For different types of vehicles, pre-Euro, Euro 1 and Euro 2, yes, they are more polluting than the new vehicles by several times to tens of times. That's why the scheme is to phase out vehicles by phases and improve air quality. That is, we all agree for the more polluting vehicles, pre-Euro, Euro 1 and Euro 2 vehicles, they ought to be phased out earlier, that's clear. As for the newer vehicles, we agree that we could tolerate them longer, so they would only be phased out in 2019, 2020. Now, I'm running out of time, but if you want to improve air quality, why don't you give more subsidy to the older vehicles? That's the, you know, the timeframe is the key to improving air quality, that's why. Mr. Quack, welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The secretary met with the sector before. The sector has expressed their concerns and the difficulties they face, but we don't see much changes to the scheme. The sector's made it clear. They understand they have to show the certain responsibility in terms of commitment to air quality, but then they've also made it clear to you. When they bought the new vehicles, the new vehicles complied with all the requirements. So to this point, they don't think they have committed a crime, they're not criminals. How come you have to pass the buck entirely to the sector? Now, for the deadline, if you are unwilling to move that, then very soon these people will be out of work. Mr. Gary Chen has already pointed out, those facing the biggest difficulties would be the single-vehicle driver owner. Now, they have to pay the finances for the vehicle, so that means, and they have to pay 70% of the cost of the vehicle, and then the other costs will also go up. So is the government giving them enough support? Or are you just saying because you are emitting RSP at a level higher than the Euro 5 vehicle, so you must retire your vehicle earlier? Is it fair to them? But they have not committed a crime, it's just that they bought a new vehicle earlier, and at that time, that was the only choice. It was either the Euro 1, Euro 2, Euro 3, or pre-Euro 1 vehicles, those were the only choices available. Now, of course, we would all like to improve air quality, but we would like it to be a voluntary approach. Now, you are setting a deadline, so people have no choices. Either they replace the vehicles, or they just pack up and go. So is it case that, is it really the position with the department that it's best if they no longer stay in the business? For the single-vehicle owner driver, they face so many difficulties. So are there any arrangements so they won't be driven out of work in the process? Now, we are talking about many households, we're not just talking about single-vehicle owner. How are they going to keep their livelihood? So do you have any concrete response, please? How do you take care of the single-vehicle owner driver? Secretary?
Thank you. Now, we've been in touch with the sector, especially, we understand the situation of the single-vehicle owner driver. Now, voluntary approach, we have had two voluntary schemes in the past, but that's not helped to improve roadside air quality in Hong Kong, so I'm sure you could all see that. So why is it the government changing its strategy, then? Is that we would increase the excursio grant at the same time, make some sort of mandatory requirement that would help to speed up the replacement of vehicles? I hope you would support this broad direction. Now, within this framework, for individual operators, how could we help them more or pay more attention to their problems? Well, we said in the media, the government has the sincerity to micro-adjust the policy, so that we could give more assistance to the operators, and so they would find the scheme acceptable.
Thank you, Secretary. If you are willing to show more care, then it is, of course, a gesture, that's welcomed by the sector. But what about inflating the price of the vehicles? Can you roll out some policies so that the grant can really help the car owners instead of the car dealers? So are there such policies? I think this is a concern shared by others. I would like to listen to other members' points on this first, before we see what we can do. Now, eight more members waiting to speak, and if we continue with the five minutes given to each member, then no one, no extra members can speak. So outside the time to four minutes each, because I'm sure members would like to ask more new questions, and there will be a second round, possibly. Mr. Chairman, Candice Chen, Elizabeth Quat Porter, Wuchihai, Tan Kapiu, Christopher Chong, and Mr. Chan Kim Paul. Mr. Yehk, four minutes. Thank you, Chairlady. The retirement of diesel vehicles is a good policy, I'm sure it's going to be beneficial to the development of Hong Kong. My sector supports it, but there's a wide spectrum in our sector. Different people faces, face different policies, especially the single-car dealer, single-car owners. They are of senior age, and they cannot afford to buy a new vehicle. They've talked to the administration, and they would like the administration to raise the grant. I think they are reasonable. The objective is to remove these vehicles from the roads, that's the government's objective, right? Some academics in the Hong Kong U came up with some studies. They presented their studies on air pollution, light pollution at Lajko 2, and especially for air pollution, it cost Hong Kong 10 billion dollars, 39 billion dollars. So I hope the government will really raise the grant and to phase out the vehicles, the 80,000 vehicles by phases. I hope you raise the grant to 10 billion dollars. Now, the second round will end in June, and the new scheme can only be launched in early next year. So there is this interim period where the other sectors stand to lose. So should they replace the vehicles or not? Now, can you introduce a retrospective period? Or can you move the new scheme to a later, to start in a later state, in a later date? When I talked to the trade, the views collected were quite similar to what you've said. We get support for our broad direction. And for the single-car owners, they encounter difficulties, so the question is how we can show them more attention. About inflating prices of dismantling cars, I also heard from the sector about this. So how can we avoid that, prevent that? We will collect all the views related before we come up with an analysis. Now, the incentive scheme will end in June, and there is a vacuum period of one year or so before we launch the new scheme. So what will happen in this period? That's why we have the second item on the agenda. We expect the new scheme to start in this year, that we encourage car owners to get the grant as soon as possible. As to whether we can offer some relaxation in the vacuum period, we can give it a thought. Mr. Yehk, do you have any, sorry, Madam Chair, what did you say? You talked about the retrospective period. Any proposals from the trade? For non-franchise buses and minibus, they have to dismantle the vehicles, and the vehicles have to be tested, and that costs a lot. And it's time for them to replace the vehicles, so what should they do? So they asked the administration to give them the grant, because they have already done all these. If the administration refuses, will they delay the launching of the new scheme? In fact, this is good to the administration, because you don't have to pay that much. And Secretary, we talked about this earlier on. Is it possible that before the 30th of June, for them to show you that they have already placed order for the new vehicle, but they haven't used it yet? In that case, can they still get the grant? My apologies, I gave Mr. Yehk one minute, because he was talking about the views of the trade, so I think it is worthwhile for us to take it as reference. Mr. Candice Chen, I think it's important for us to listen to the trade, and so I support organizing a public hearing for the deputation, so we can gauge their views. Green groups also offer their views in terms of healthcare and air quality. Financial incentives should be given, and there should also be a ban on renewal of licenses for the scheme to work. So you have to be stringent in stopping the renewal of licenses, otherwise, the effectiveness of the scheme will be undermined. The first two schemes were not exactly satisfactory. I'd like to come back to it later. Now, about my points, first, studies by HKU and UST on air quality and public health. Every year, there are thousands of people suffering from respiratory diseases, and that will incur healthcare costs. That's why 10 billion dollars is given by the government to subsidize the trade to replace their vehicles. You have to list out the healthcare issue in the paper. How the scheme is going to save costs on healthcare, because this point is important for the public to know. Secondly, we lack information on single-vehicle car owners, single-vehicle owners. This is a matter close to my heart, too. Now, you have talked to them, they confirmed that. For the 120,000 diesel vehicles, pre-Euro and Euro 4 vehicles, we have to know more about all these vehicles. How many people are we talking about? How many people who may lose their jobs? How many people whose livelihood is going to suffer? We have to know the number. We may agree that healthcare is important, it's important for you to phase out all the vehicles, and you have the policies to stop the renewal of licenses, but you have to show compassion. Now, these two matters are not in conflict. So I would like to see more flexibility in your policy. And I don't think the green groups will oppose to all these care to be given to the single-car owners. For the data lacking, we can supplement that in paper in the future. We have, we know how many single-vehicle owners, small operators, say, small operators owning two vehicles only. Now, we have data about that, but are they the victims here? So even though we have the data, it doesn't mean that they are exactly accurate, because for the small operators, they may be operating in a smooth manner, so we can't say everybody is a victim. Secondly, the focus of today's discussion should be about putting resources to help the car owners in need. A group of drivers' livelihood might be affected. Now, I'm making assumptions here. Say, for example, can we give more grant assistance to a larger group? I know time is limited, but if the bureau is not going to take it up, then, sorry, I can't really stop it. I will not stop officials from replying, but for full-up questions, my apologies, that cannot be allowed now. Miss Elizabeth Quat.
I agree, we should improve public health and air quality, and we should start the scheme as soon as possible, but there are certain issues I think the bureau has to consider carefully. Several points have already been made by my colleagues. First, we're talking about 10 billion dollars, this is not a small sum. How can we ensure it's well-spent? I'm worried that you may not be rolling out an effective scheme, rather, you may create more problems. For single-car owners and green groups, they all have their concern. Do you have to roll out a scheme for all types of vehicles, the pre-Euro, Euro 1, 2, 4 vehicles altogether? Why don't you work on the highly polluting vehicles, say, Euro 1 and 2? Otherwise, you cannot really come up with a comparison. So can you work on Euro 1 and 2 first, and then after that, you roll out another scheme for Euro 3? People have many other views about Euro 3, for example, using the converter to lower the pollutants emitted instead of phasing them out. As for single-vehicle owner, we've talked a lot about it. we've talked a lot about it. My opinion is that can you give them help in some other ways? Now, these people may not be able to afford retrofitting the vehicles. So can you help them financially? And there are some schemes for SME. Can we make use of that so these people can stay on? I have to draw a line here. Five members waiting to speak in the first round and another, more members waiting to speak in the second round. Mister, Miss Claudia Mao and Mister Albert Chen for the first round. And now over to you, official, for reply.
Launch the scheme in phases, we consider that. Now, we focus on the pre-Euro III vehicles, 80,000. They are relatively highly polluting, that's why we have to tackle them first. We understand it's important to be flexible and roll the scheme in phases. We have three deadlines for the 80,000 vehicles to be phased out gradually. Euro III, they may not be so highly polluting, can they be taken out of the scheme? We consider that this is not satisfactory for two reasons. First, they are highly polluting. Five times higher than Euro IV and V. To safeguard public health and improve air quality, we have to tackle Euro III too. Secondly, if we take out Euro III, maybe two, three years later, there may be voices asking us to tackle Euro III vehicles. Then people buying second-hand cars may not be able to make an informed decision. They may buy a Euro III vehicle and then two years later, then the vehicles should be phased out. That's why we will include Euro III so that people can make an informed decision when buying cars.
Mister Porter, thank you, Madam Chair. I support the strategy of the administration in principle. But there's some point I don't quite get. Appendix C, NXC, some ratios are given. And I and my colleagues are a bit confused by the percentage. That is, for the older vehicle, if you give a grant too high, maybe affect the second-hand car price. But then, of course, you would like the oldest vehicles to be replaced first. So how come there are different percentages in terms of excursio grant? This for the oldest vehicles, you want to encourage them to switch, to be replaced. So if you give them more grant and they will, then replace their vehicles. But for the new, but the reason, reason why people still holding on to their old cars probably because they couldn't afford to buy new ones. That's the first point. Second point. Now, you say there will be 15-year phasing out period, but the trade is saying that maybe that's too short a period. And so I, I think you need to have some scientific data to support that proposed timeframe. And for the vehicle recycling industry, if you are going to implement this scheme, have you assessed whether this industry is able to cope? Would it lead to other problems?
Mister Li. Thank you, Madam Chair, for the question. There are two major considerations here. Now, the trade's view is that you must enforce me to buy new cars. What if I'm about to retire or just want to buy a second-hand car, which is still give us a grant? So there are two lines here. If they buy a new car, that means they have a heavier financial burden, then they will get a greater grant. But if they buy a second-hand car, they will still get a grant, but it will be at a lower level because the burden will be less. For cars of different ages, the principle is polluters' pay. And we have regard to the age of the vehicle. For the old, for newer vehicles, because they have more residual economic value, that's why the grant is larger. And we don't link the amount of the grant to the, to a car model, but to the car age. Now, if there is a pre-Euro III, uh, two vehicles, um, maybe it's been on the road for 10, 20 years. And because the deadline is 2019, if they drive vehicles for a few more years and the car is older, then the grant would be less. So we try to make it an incentive in designing our scheme so that owners will opt to replace their vehicles earlier. Then we could achieve the objective of improving air quality earlier. If we lengthy grant to a type of vehicle, for example, all Euro III vehicles, we don't care when you replace the vehicles, you will still get 30% of the, of grant. Then, you know, it's probably human nature that people will then drive a car till the deadline in 2090 before they replace it. We've actually talked to a lot of people in the trade. And then we've talked to the recycling industry, we've talked to those retrofitting the car body and so on. We have been talking to them all this time, so they have plenty of time to make preparation. Even banks, we talked to banks. Last week, we talked to major banks involved in the car financing business. They say that the car financing terms are already very good now. They could do 90% financing and it could be a fixed interest rate of 2% to 3%. So the terms are very favorable. And they say that if the government is to introduce the compensation scheme, they have, then they could have then they, they could offer this more preferable, preferable, preferential terms to car owners. Now, next item, of course, you could ask similar questions. I'm sorry, running out of time, so we still couldn't allow second round for this first item. But you could take the opportunity in the second item to follow up. Mister Wuchiwai. The government is using a carrot-and-stick approach, is setting a deadline, is also offering grants, so we support that approach. Then another principle is also important for the heavily polluting vehicles. There should be additional factors or incentives. So they will replace, so the vehicles will be replaced earlier. From a policy point of view, would the administration consider this? Would there be a special grant for early replacement? Now, for the old diesel vehicles, mostly the, they own, the mostly the owners own just one vehicle in these cases and they may face a lot of difficulties. But then you say it may go, if you give them more subsidy, it may go against the principle of polluters' pay. So can we come up with justification? So that when we phase out the old vehicles, we could give them an excursio, a special grant? Because they have, these cars have to be retired by 2016 in any case. If you could give them special grant and so people would replace their vehicles earlier, could we consider it? Because it's all about improving air quality and we don't have to wait till the deadline. There is an additional incentive for people to retire their vehicles even earlier than the deadline. Can it be considered? I think that's what the scheme is about, that's how it's designed. As we link the grant to the age of the vehicles, not the type of vehicles. So the earlier owners replace the vehicles, the more grants they get. Well, maybe they say when they bought the vehicle, they didn't know what its impact was on the air pollution. But now we know, um, these vehicles emit some substances that are carcinogenic. So we would all accept now for the different types of vehicles, they have different levels of pollutants emitted. For the oldest vehicles, pre-Euro I's, they've been around for a long time. So if we set the deadline of two to three years, within that timeframe, would we still have some sort of incentive to encourage early birds, as suggested by Mister Wuchiwai? Yes, the trade has made a similar suggestion, but the difference won't be too much because we are saying that within two or three years, the oldest vehicles will have to be phased out. So are we going to break that two-to-three-year period down further and offer even a greater incentive? Would it make a huge difference? Now, we say we need to improve the air quality to a certain level by 2015. But is it really necessary to break down the two-to-three-year period further? That's the point. Madam Chair, well, we've heard a lot from the trade. Now, when we roll out an initiative, we do it in goodwill. At the same time, we would like to take into account the aspirations of different stakeholders. And of course, we have to have regard to our own policy objective. The policy objective is to improve roadside air quality as soon as possible. That's why I'm suggesting this to the administration. If we have a further breakdown of the two-to-three-year period, perhaps that would be a tool in resolving the the dissenting views or the opposing views in this case. Mister Chankin Po.
Well, I support the government proposal because we've been discussing for a long time. And so we need to have a scheme to go about it. NXB and NXC, I have some questions for the pre-Euro vehicles. By 2012, 16,000 vehicles have been on the road for 18 years and you allowed them to stay on the road till 2016. So would it be really bad by then? You know, we are talking about vehicles over 20 years old, would it be too much? Would you consider drawing a line here? For pre-Euro vehicles, there should be a separate deadline. I, I understand, of course, you may have a problem here because people have bought the cars maybe only recently and that would lead to conflict. But, you know, most of these vehicles are on the road for 18 years or more. So I think you should give them more subsidies so that they will be encouraged to scrap their vehicles. It's better than to let them stay on the road till they are some 21 years old. Now, for cars aged 18 years or above, the grant is 10%. Now, if they scrap the vehicle now, how much would they get? Would it be similar to the 10% of value? Would, is it very much different or not?
Secretary, for the scrapping value of vehicles, we've talked to the scrap industry. They say that prices fluctuate wildly. Depends on the condition of the vehicle, the model of the vehicle and whether there is an overseas market for this type of vehicle. If there are buyers overseas, so these vehicles could be exported, of course, they could fetch a higher scrap price. Now, for most of pre-Euro vehicles that are 18 years or above, there is little overseas market value. So they're just taking back these vehicles as scraps, it's truly scrap, metal scrap. So definitely the grant we offer is higher than the value they get by selling the cars to a recycler. So if they scrap the vehicle, what will they get? 5%, 8% or what? How does it compare to your 10%? For pre-Euro vehicles, what we understand is that it could cost $10,000 or a few thousand dollars. It depends on how poor the condition of the vehicle is. And that's why I believe the 10% subsidy should be appealing enough. What, what do you mean 10%? How much is it in value? Let's say for a new, like, goods vehicle, the new, the price is $300,000. So 10% of that is $30,000. So that means it's very attractive. Yes, indeed. Second question, for the 16,000 pre-Euro vehicles that are over 18 years. So what do you say about that? Now, the most polluting vehicles are the pre-Euro vehicles. So that's why we've always taken this as the first batch of vehicles we have to deal with. For Euro II or pre-Euro II vehicles, we would like to stop the renewal of licenses for these vehicles by 2016. Now, if it's the end of the year or early next year, if electric gives approval for the scheme, then we must still give time for the replacement of pre-Euro, Euro I and Euro II vehicles. So that's why we need two years. So the pre-Euro and the Euro I vehicles are the first batch to be dealt with and will no longer renew license by the deadline. Miss Claudia Mao. You want to improve air pollution or air quality, so you want to give incentives to the trade. No one is against this broad principle. But here we're talking about huge sum of money. So there's every reason to expect the money is well-spent. Air pollution, now anyone opens the window, we'll be breathing the same air. But for roadside air pollution, well, it's a class issue really. It's a social issue. You know, the rich in their limousines, they don't feel the roadside air pollution. As the grassroots is those who have to cross the road or those are waiting for public transport, they could, would feel it. So a question for the Environment Bureau. You are using so much money to phase out these vehicles in the hope of improving roadside air pollution. Would you consider in principle or would you even give an undertaking? Okay, now you're going to spend so much money to improve the quality of car emissions. So when people cross the road, say, in Chimsachoe Salisbury Road, we've been following up on that for seven years. People are not allowed to cross the road there. From the Peninsula Hotel, you want to go across to the Space Museum. It's such a long walk. Some suspect it's because you want to bring people traffic to the Underground Mall. But then there's someone from the EPD who told us it's because of the roadside air pollution problem. So after you've implemented this measure, would, could you promise that roadside or air pollution, air quality would be improved? There's a question. Second question. Now, even if you improve the quality of vehicle emissions, but what about in the car parks or? Now, okay, this may be commercial vehicles of high quality. If they keep circling on the road because there are no parking spaces, then you still generate air pollution. That's my second question. My third question. Paragraph eight, I find it a little regrettable. The, at the end of the scheme, the overall participation rate may be slightly higher than the 40%, 24% target. So what exactly is the situation? You know, in your initial assessment, what's the discrepancy here? While some of Miss Mao's questions are outside this paper, can I invite the administration to focus on issues in this paper?
The last question is directly related to this paper about the data. I think Miss Mao was talking about a paper in the second item, for the second item. Can we defer our reply? Well, the two papers are actually related and since the question has been raised and I'm quite relaxed. Is what, we can come back to this question when we discuss the next item. But if you can take up the question, official, please go ahead. Thank you for the two questions, Miss Mao. About traffic. The retirement scheme is a large-scale one to bring down emission by diesel commercial vehicles to improve roadside air quality. As to whether there will be changes in air quality in various districts that will have to that will have to be left to the TD Transport Department to monitor. Traffic flow, safety, these issues are better taken up by the Transport Department. Now, paragraph eight of the paper, related to second item. When we came to Lashco for funding approval, the estimated particip- participation rate was twenty-four percent. It was a voluntary scheme at that time. And so at that time, it was difficult for us to anticipate how the scheme was to be received. We only made use of data at hand, we had at hand about pre-euro and euro one vehicles. As for the present scheme, we have already spent four hundred million dollars for over thousands of applications. We still have over a thousand applications outstanding, which will amount to one hundred million dollars in terms of grant. And we expect to gather more more applications in May and June. That's why for the second item, we are actually asking for an an increase in commitment for the one-off grant. All right, now the question is dealt with, let's not come back to it in the second item. Mr. Albert Chen. No one will oppose to the scheme, but there are several points for the administration to consider. First, for the direct grant and the waiver of first registration fee. What are the relation, what's the relationship? The grant can come from the treasury or it can be in the form of a waiver. If it's the latter, it's not from the direct expenditure of the government. So why don't you go for the waiver scheme instead of going by way of expenditure from government? I don't quite understand the logic. We're talking about ten billion dollars. So you have to have comprehensive analysis from the beginning to the end, from the dry drivers, car owners, to see whether people people are making huge profit or people are making, taking a chance to maximize their profit. You have to come up with comprehensive analysis so as to prevent people from maximizing their profit. Earlier on, the government subsidizes the ferry operators in terms of maintenance fee. Now, people queried, was it a collusion between government and the business sector? And now we're talking about ten billion dollars. So can you come up with a comprehensive analysis first? Thank you for the questions. For the grant. It is in the form of excursia payment to encourage people, to assist people to replace their vehicles. First, when they buy a new vehicle, they get the payment. Or if the vehicle is retired or if the vehicle is dismantled, then the owner can get the grant too, it's a direct grant. If it's done by way of first registration fee, then no, it's not going to help the people who buy second-hand cars. Now, when someone buys a green vehicle, then he can also get the grant. Secondly, we understand that apart from the eighty thousand car owners, people in car dismantling, vehicle body manufacturing, they all stand to be affected. We have talked to these people. Can you come up with an analysis, a study in paper? How many more businesses are we talking about? And how can you ensure that no one will make a profit because of their special position? So can you come up with a study to show why? To show how the car dealers would not make a profit out of it? Mr. Tan Karpew. Ten billion dollars is a large amount. Eighty thousand cars and a large number of them belong to single car owners. People are simply relying on driving to make a living. And when they're old, they don't really welcome the scheme. They have to pay seventy percent. How can they afford it? I share Mr. Albert Chen's concern about possible collusion. Now, you have to pay mortgage for a vehicle five years. Or what will happen to these people? I'm no expert, so I may make mistake in my questions. But for the highly polluting vehicles, would they be phased out naturally, for example? Now, if that's the case, then for the first two schemes, you said that they would ease air pollution. But now you say this particular scheme is going to help. We understand that in twenty twelve, one hundred seventy-two days, see very pollu- are very polluted days. Is it related to diesel vehicles? If not, then why are we spending ten billion dollars? So is roadside air pollution directly related to diesel vehicles? That's my second quest- uh that's my first question. Second question. We don't want so much PM ten, PM two point five in the air because they contain cancer rates. But NOX is the real issue here, which are from buses. If you don't allow the administration to reply, then they have to supply, reply in writing. In twenty oh seven, in three monitoring stations, Causeway Bay, eighty-five, and now sixty-one, that's the uh figures for NOX. That's why I say NOX is the real issue here. That's why I think it's important for you to be cautious in spending this ten billion dollars. Just fifteen seconds for reply, Mr. Li. I don't think you can answer that. I'll give you twenty men- uh twenty seconds. You can always supply, reply in writing. NOX, RSP, and not, and RSP all contribute to air pollution. Euro one, two is highly polluting when compared to euro four, five by two to three times. We just tackle the air pollution emission by different vehicles by ways of different means. RSP, according to WHO, is contain cancer risk. Mr. Christopher Chung. In annex, there is a table for pre-euro, euros one, two, four vehicles. The north, what's the figure of north RSP emitted by these vehicles? You just gave us the percentage is too vague. Maybe euro four vehicles are performing very well, we still have euro four vehicles. They are still being produced. Do you have any comparison between euro four and five? You don't have that here. You have to tackle. If RSP amounts to forty percent of air pollutants, then you should give eighty percent of subsidies. This is what I call environmental protection. For euro four vehicles, maybe they are not so, they are not performing as bad. These are very, still very new vehicles. They may not be so good as euro five, but they are, they outperform euro one. So why do you push euro four away? Why don't you spend more on the others? In that way, five years down the road, we'll have fresh air then. NXB, NXB in fact, let's have the contribution to RSP, north and O, NO two. So it's all in the paper. We set priority in our scheme. Highly polluting vehicles will be phased out first. This is our principle. This is our principle in improving air quality. For euro three, they're still covered under the scheme. But I think the car owners will wait till the vehicle has served fifteen years before they join the scheme. So in a way, we are encouraging phasing our highly polluting vehicles. As for how the excursia payment can help. Members have already reiterated that public money has to be well spent. And we should not just make a generalization about how much we spend for euro one and two car owners. They warrant more attention from the government, so we give more consideration to them. No, the table doesn't contain the information. I want to have a comparison between different types of vehicles. And secondly, if you follow my suggestion, wouldn't you be able to improve air quality earlier? Time's up and we have so many questions today. Please supplement on points made in paper. Administration. Two members have raised their hands for second round of questions, Mr. Kwok Wai Kung and Mr. Kenneth Chen. Mr. Kenneth Chen and Mr. Chi Ming, we've already drawn a line for your second round, sorry for that.
Mr. Kwok Wai Kung. Thank you, Madam Chair. The department said that for euro three, euro four vehicles, they ought to be replaced. Now, there is an incentive, you give they, they will get a twenty-seven percent grant. But if they only replace it after nine, twenty nineteen, then the grant will drop. So that's an incentive to appeal to car owners. But then, is there such a proposal for euro one and euro two vehicles? No, the flat rate is eighteen percent. So do you have any proposals or measures to appeal to these owners? So they will replace their vehicles earlier instead of making it mandatory? Because now you have changed the rules of the game, people have been um abiding by the law. But now all of a sudden, it seems that they are breaking the law.
Yes, I understand the members' concern. For pre-euro and euro one vehicles to the most polluting. Actually, we are already giving a priority in setting the deadline. So um by January twenty sixteen, for these vehicles, we will no longer renew the licenses. So we're giving the owners two to three years to replace the vehicles. It's about replacing twenty thirty vehicles in two to three years. There's an aggressive timetable, we believe. That's why there's no need to uh up the incentive so that people will replace the vehicles in the first year, for instance. Um, no, we are not considering that. For euro two, euro three vehicles, because they're relatively newer and there's a longer timeframe for replacing the vehicles. So for vehicles of different ages, then there will be differential grant. And such a differential grant would have um bigger impact. That's exactly the point. Why are you giving uh pre-euro and euro one cars all the time? People don't have a choice now. I think it's not just this hour, so uh this issue has been raised for a long time. Perhaps the administration could explain further in the paper you're going to submit after the meeting. Now, for the excursia grant, among the retirement age of the uh and the health condition of the public and how we avoid a car dealer from inflating prices, these are four factors we have to consider. But all these four factors may not coexist and some are mutually exclusive in a way. So I think you should look at four factors and how they interact. Because at the end of the day, there could be just one proposal. So it's all a matter of striking a balance among the four factors. Dr. Kenneth Chen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members' question is exactly um the way you've summed it up. There are four major factors, really. Now, we heard from a colleague that um single car owners account for forty percent of the uh owners of the fleet. Is that the case? Secretary.
Yes, I can understand for single vehicle owners, there are many different types. Some are doing very well, some less so, some are older in age, some are younger. Even my cousin was in the domain logistics business. He's just retired because he could no longer make ends meet. He believes the, their uncertainty is in the outlook of this um trade. That's why he switched to a different trade. So if the administration or members are sincere about finding out the true picture. Of course, we understand the broad direction of this policy, I'm sure we all support it. Because in previous schemes, we know that um there's much room for improvement. So we understand um the direction, we support it. But when it comes to actual implementation, how do we strike the balance, especially for those who may feel aggrieved? Um, would there be any compassionate arrangement for them? So that's why in any times of policy, the social policy and other policy when the government um formulate such policy, will have a good grip of the picture. Um, like the health condition and so on. So in this case, we need to know more about the trade so that we can be more focused in giving assistance to the trade. And then I'm sure the scheme will work a lot better. I don't think, it's not a difficult issue to tackle. It's all about spending a bit more time. It's all about spending a bit more time and effort to find out more information. There's the forty percent claim of the fleet. Can you please give us some more information afterwards? Yes, please supply us with the paper afterwards. I don't think you have time to answer the question here. Well, I'd like to thank members for your enthusiastic discussion on this item, but we have no time. We have to move on to the next item. Increase in commitment for one off grant to encourage early replacement of Euro two diesel commercial vehicles. Administration, can you take us through the paper? Who, please? Secretary.
For the last voluntary scheme. It was launched in July twenty oh one, uh twenty ten. It's a purely voluntary grant scheme for Euro two diesel. It lasts thirty six it's the last thirty six months. It's to encourage Euro two diesel vehicles to replace their vehicles with new ones. And the the condition is that they must buy new vehicles for to replace their old vehicles. And. And the grant is eighteen percent of the one off grant is equivalent to eighty percent of the annual average vehicle taxable values of newly registered vehicles in twenty oh nine. At that time, we applied for five hundred thirty nine point four million dollars from the Finance Committee to cover this to finance the scheme. We received about six thousand five hundred applications. Three thousand or five thousand three hundred applications have been granted. That accounts for about ninety percent of all eligible vehicles. And the expenditure was about four hundred fifty billion dollars, eighty five percent of the sum granted. That's a balance of eighty three million dollars. We believe the balance is not sufficient to pay for the outstanding one thousand and eighty applications. There's still two more there's still two more months in the scheme. Then we may be receiving new applications. So that's why we're asking for an additional funding of hundred and twenty million dollars to meet the financial commitment of the scheme. The details are in the paper. Thank you. Mister Frederick Yeh, Mister Gary Chen, Mister Tang Kao Pui, Mister Wu Chi Wei, Mister Kwok Wai Kung. Five members, five minutes each. Now, so it's good to raise your hand early beginning, you get more time, but I will shorten the time limit as we go along.
Mister Yeh, I support the. Additional funding application. Reason why there are more people applying under the scheme? Because the sector now comes to realize that the new grant scheme won't come in place so soon. But then some need to replace their vehicles soon, so they would therefore join the scheme. It's good. Then if they join the scheme, I mean, next time round for the other scheme, there will be need to spend. There won't be the need to spend so much. Now, I I would like to ask a question on behalf of Mister Chen Kim Po. For the old diesel vehicles, you know, ten, twenty years old, no one wants them. For the single vehicle owners, the problem they face that they are already in their sixty years old. They are driving this eighteen year old vehicle. They plan to drive for few more years and then they retire. But then you're asking them to change their vehicles before then. So what do they do? Let's say I'm owner driver. Every night I go to I I do one trip, seven hundred dollars a day. So every month I earn twenty thousand dollars. So it's enough for me to support a family. But then the government saying that I'm going to take your vehicle back. If you don't replace the vehicle, they'll give you ten percent of the value. But then how are they going to keep a livelihood in the next few years? So it is about more about likely. It's not so much about how much the second hand vehicle is valued at. I I think you have summed up our points very neatly, Madam Chair. So we all support the spirit of scheme, but as we heard from the trade, they face a lot of problems. Now, of course, we all know from academic studies that Hong Kong is to reap huge benefit from such schemes in the long run. So I think you should come to some consensus with the trades since possible. I think the trade is going to arrive at the own consensus soon and next week or so. So please speak to them so that we could all bring implement this scheme early because it will do Hong Kong much good.
All right, administration, I'm sure you've heard that members support it. Now, I want to clarify that from my early summary. In fact, there is no consensus here. I already listed four elements for you to consider. And at the end of the day, you have to come up with something to consider that. Mister Tang Kao Pui. Additional funding application, I support it. This is a voluntary scheme. Which is different from the scheme earlier on. That one was a composed that one is a compulsory scheme. Can you give us more information about the types of cars joining the scheme? Are we talking about vehicles registered by companies or owned by single car owners? Single owner owner drivers? If most people participating are owner drivers. Then it's good. Now, how come some people do not replace their vehicles? Because they rely on that one vehicle to earn a living. Well, they do not make make more money because they drive a newer vehicle like Euro five. That explains why they are unwilling to change the vehicle. Understand Mister Tang's question. We do not have the data of. Euro two car owners. Joining the scheme. We have to try to understand it from the Transport Department to see whether they can come up with the data, supply the data. Chairlady, my apologies. I would like to ask that after the first scheme, eleven thousand vehicles were taken away, were removed. So. Euro one vehicles have been phased out on their own. Even without your subsidies. So ten thousand Euro one vehicles have already been phased out without your policy. So. For owner drivers, can you give them some more grant subsidies? Can you give some consideration to that? To address Mister Tang's concern, it's up to the owners to see whether they want to change the vehicles. It's not for the government to say. That's why sometimes it takes longer for vehicles to change. When we launched the scheme in twenty ten, there were over twenty seven thousand Euro two vehicles. It's only after two years that we have been managed to phase out some. So it takes more time for us to phase out the vehicles. And that's why. We want to complement the voluntary scheme with the compulsory scheme we discussed earlier on. So what's good about the compulsory scheme? After the Euro one two retirement scheme. In fact. People did not have a choice because these vehicles were already in bad condition and they had to pay for the maintenance, the repair. Now, the compulsory scheme may make people feel that it's something imposed upon by the government. But then. We are offering grant to these people who are driving old vehicles not in good condition. That's why the compulsory scheme. Can ensure public health and help drivers operating these vehicles. So for the owner drivers, can you offer them a high amount of grant? In the first few years and no grant later. In that way, you can actually help those people who are relying on the vehicle to make a living. I think we have a consensus in terms of principle. But as for the details, I think we have to work more on that. I'm sure members agree that in the near future. We will have to engage in bargaining. When we enter that stage, we would already have collected our views. But before that, we can't really release details about the implementation. So to assure members. We fully comprehend, appreciate which group you would like us to show more concern. But please give us time to negotiate with the trade. I think she's asking you not to ask her to review. That the details. The bottom line. The administration has to look at the A Q O and is part of their policy objective. Now, they are seeking additional funding for an existing initiative in existing policy. And the participation rate is higher than your expectation. I was not in this position when the paper was endorsed last time. Now. Let me give you an let me ask you this. Do you have any timetable about phasing our vehicles? Any information about about car dealers exceeding the prices possibly? Now, you know, the car price is fixed and that's subject to fluctuation because of inflation and exchange rate. Do you have any information about? Car dealers making profit because of this policy? If you have such information, it will be reassuring. To us. Early retirement is a tool. In twenty fifteen, the government has to launch the new A Q O air quality objective. Now, on the other hand. We understand from the trade that mechanical vehicles can serve for a long time with good maintenance and repair. So just looking at the depreciation, using it as the baseline is not exactly fair. Would I support your application for additional funding? Can you consider Chairlady's four points concerning the ten billion dollars scheme? Any replies from administration? No, that Mister Kwok Wai Kung. Application for additional funding, I endorse it. This is the funding for voluntary scheme and I support this scheme. It's been in place for over two years. Five thousand vehicles have been phased out and you expect six thousand can be phased out. But what's the result in terms of air quality? Have you improved air quality? And if so, how much? Days of poor air quality only rises, not decreases. So how effective is the scheme? And do you expect to see any concrete improvement with this and with the ten billion dollar scheme? How many highly polluted days will? How many decrease in terms of air pollution days can we see? For Euro two vehicles, five thousand have been removed. And we still processing one thousand more applications. So in the end, we may be able to take away six thousand of such vehicles. Now, in Annex B of the previous of paper for previous item. And N O S amounts to fourteen percent of emission and N O two, ten percent of total emission. So taking away twenty five percent of Euro two vehicles, we can bring down the emission by twenty five percent. It's still a small amount. That's why we have to tackle Euro three and four for more specific improvement. We tackle three types of vehicles. Diesel commercial vehicles first. We hope we can bring down emission of R S P and N O S emitted by them. Secondly. Franchised buses. We will brief members on our next step and the progress of retrofitting converter on franchise buses. The retrofitting can bring down emission of N O S by sixty percent. Third. Will subsidize the twenty one thousand L P G taxi to retrofit converters. We are scrutinizing the tender brief. We hope in the second half of this year, we can launch this scheme. With the three policies in place, the roadside air pollution will be improved because of the reduction in R S P and N O S. But we have to work on these three policies in tandem to see effective results. R S P N O S, the emission of them will be brought down. But what about the days of highly the number of highly polluted days? What's the reduction in that? Secretary has said that we hope by twenty twenty. We can comply with the new A Q O. We understand that. Places nearby. Have had more serious air pollution than us. And there are many factors that we cannot control. Lots of pollutants are coming from nearby areas. They.
Under secretary. Allow me to clarify that once again, for roadside air quality, we ought to take most of the responsibility. And we mentioned vessel before. Why is it for roadside and air pollution? Why must we do more? Because it's exactly in our own emissions on the by the roadside. Every day, every hour, that's where we see the largest congregation of Hong Kong people. The Environment Bureau and the N P D E P D for us. What do we control in terms of end of pipe solution? That's direct pollution. You can imagine in the most crowded places, if we do all these measures, then we could work out how much of the pollution we could reduce. But if all of a sudden. of the pollution we could reduce. But if all of a sudden, that's search in number of vehicles, there's heavy traffic congestion, um, traffic comes to a standstill, then of course, um, emissions would be increased. That's why we keep saying is a major challenge because there are always so many, so many factors. If we talk about improving public health and in terms of end of pipe solution, this is the most effective, this entirely within our control to do it. So and of course, there could be other factors, perhaps in the larger area. Yes, it's true. In terms of vehicle emission, ours is at a high level. And what we can do to immediately help public health, these are exactly the measures we talk about. That's why for the cruise terminal, you should switch to onshore power as soon as possible. Otherwise, those in central column would suffer.
Dr. Kenneth Chen. Well, when we do public policy research, we're concerned that you will only work on the principles, estimates, and then you work out how much resources to spend and then we see nothing more out of it. And of course, the three parties are all in support of the initiative to replace old diesel vehicles. But then we find that for the previous governments, they did a lot of work, but still they couldn't come up with all these statistics and the data. I'm glad to hear that you're going to talk to the transport department. So for the previous schemes, they've been in place for so long, what exactly is the progress? I think it's important for any policy, if you develop policy, we want the government to follow it through. Okay, before the start of the initiative, you work out assumptions and then you ask for resources. But then what are the, what is the outcome? You have to then do analysis and get the outcome. So now you're going to apply for ten billion dollars from us. How do we take things forward? It's important that you take stock of previous schemes. And I, I think the bureau should support the department. Now, you have already published a blueprint, so and other bureau should help too. Professor Anthony Jones Bureau should help out as well. And for owner drivers, how many are there exactly? I hope you could provide the figure.
And if we need to take into consideration various factors of owner drivers, please let us know, we can help you. We don't want to expose your bottom line. That slogan, what is it? Hong Kong our home, right? So if you want people to take Hong Kong as our home, you have to do more, otherwise it will be just lip service.
So you want a number of owner drivers. Yes, we could give you the figure, but I'm concerned what you said following that.
Yes, it's possible there is an owner driver. May, may, can we do, make any compassionate range for them on the social policy? Maybe they, he doesn't want that. We could only say, I can only give you figures of owner drivers and then perhaps we could make an assumption, perhaps for this particular group, they need more subsidy. Yes, I'm not against that. But I'm worried if you, we have to follow through what you said is whether there are other measures to help them. Maybe they need some sort of social support. Now at this point, I must make very clear that it's not, we can't do that. Now, I understand there is division of labor among different departments. I'm, we're not forcing the Environment Bureau to check up housing assistance and social assistance as well. And also, I wouldn't want to say what sort of assistance these people may need from the government. Maybe they need nothing. Okay, maybe they are older in age, maybe they are going to retire, but we can't make any assumptions. Then they would apply for C S S A. No, no, that's not what I meant. I think you have distorted my meaning. No, no, I'm not talking about that at all.
It's like the urban redevelopment authority when they resume shop, the shop is what the whole household relies on for livelihood, then you have to consider that. It's the same. Mr. Gary Chen.
Madam Chair, I support this additional funding application. Taking this opportunity, I would also like to say what I think about the early scheme and this scheme. I support the additional funding. I also support replacement of Euro two diesel commercial vehicles, just as we support the replacement of Euro one diesel commercial vehicles because we are targeting the highly polluting vehicles. But for the ten billion dollar scheme we just talked about, why is it that I'm against it or have reservation at least? Because that policy would not allow the government to achieve the aim of replacing older vehicles which are more polluting. The government said the replacement criterion is based on the age of the vehicle. So is the government now recycler of secondhand vehicles? Are you the Environment Bureau? If you're the Environment Bureau, you should pay more to the more polluting vehicles so these are phased out earlier. But if you want to recycle vehicles, of course you pay for the newer vehicles if you just want to buy secondhand vehicles. So and I would say that's a blind spot in the government's policy and it's a measure to split the horse before the cart. So next time, before we have a public hearing or when you actually come to the Finance Committee for funding, you have to consider very carefully what exactly your role is. Are you being the Environment Bureau, are you just trying to buy secondhand vehicles?
Secretary.
For pre, uh, pre-Euro, Euro one, Euro two, and Euro three vehicles, the particular emissions when compared to Euro five vehicles is three or even five times higher or five to thirty times higher. So if we want to achieve our A Q Os in two thousand and twenty, then these vehicles have to be phased out. That's clear. So we are doing it in a phased approach and another manner. So we're trying to replace all these diesel commercial vehicles. That's what we try to achieve. In response to the Secretary, you say for the more polluting vehicles, you pay more. How come for pre-Euro vehicles, they contribute to forty-one percent of R S Ps? But for Euro three vehicles, they contribute to twelve percent of R S P emission. But then for pre-Euro vehicles, they only get a grant of eighty percent. But for Euro three vehicles, they get almost thirty percent of grant. So that exactly flies in the face of what you just said. There are several tools. Time frame is the most important tool because we want to protect public health. So for the more polluting vehicles, they ought to be phased out sooner. I hope you will first support this broad principle. And then second point, we understand if we want to make it mandatory to phase out vehicles, then how do we offer a reasonable escrow payment? So the trade will buy into the scheme. It's about spending public money wisely. Now, the past practice was to base it on the residual value of a vehicle. Of course, we've heard the views of the trade and different members. Now, in Hong Kong, you, I mean, in other countries, especially advanced countries, you rarely see cars over twenty years, so still on the road. But this is special situation in Hong Kong. This is a unique social phenomenon here in Hong Kong. So how do we deal with that? That's why we need to strike a balance. But we, we can't say that because it's more polluting, then we should give a higher grant. Well, yes, some green groups are saying that, but then that goes against the principle of the polluters' pay. That is, the more polluting you are, you get more in grant. Then I don't think the committee will accept that.
Mr. Li, can I offer this piece of, this view? Now, the members, members just said you would like a public hearing to listen to the views of the trade and stakeholders on the two papers. For the replacement, vehicle replacement scheme, I understand you might wish to listen to the views of reputations. But then for this paper on increasing the commitment for the replacing Euro two vehicles, it seems that most members are in support of it. So if you agree that we could ask for additional funding, perhaps we could deal with it in a more straightforward manner, that we could just simply go to the F C to apply for funding. And then the public hearing could be devoted entirely to the retirement of pre-Euro four diesel commercial vehicles. Because for the Euro two vehicle replacement scheme is entirely voluntary. We're not forcing owners to apply under the scheme and they could always choose to go for the other scheme later on.
Well, I was just about to ask you. What is the convergence timetable of the two schemes? Because for the Euro two scheme, it will expire on the thirtieth of June. So I have a big question mark. It's already the sixteenth of May, or fifteenth of May, sorry. So you still have forty-five days and you have another thousand applications to be processed. Where do you draw the line? We'd be like increasing tobacco duty. That is, as long as people submits an application form by midnight, the, on the thirtieth of June, you will still entertain the application. So what is the bridging arrangement? Now, I see the average grant is eighty-six thousand dollars. Maybe they don't want to choose the scheme. They want to wait till you offer the twenty-odd percent grant, grant, and with that twenty-odd percent grant would be more or less than the eighty-six thousand dollars. I know you have, you mustn't show your, your cards, but I think members have to consider the two schemes together. Under Secretary.
The trade knows very well why they want to use the existing scheme, maybe because their vehicle has to be, has to go through examination, they have to do the retrofitting anyway. And then another point is that we have a concern, the trade has the same concern, and it's how soon the new scheme could be launched.
For all trades related to this replacement scheme, as things have actually come to a halt because everybody's waiting to see what the new scheme is like. I'm sure everyone wants to know exactly how it's going to work and then things will get moving again. And for to get things moving again, we have to do several things. One, so we go through this meeting, we have to go to F C, P D O S C, whatever. But we need to legislate for the new scheme. We hope that in the near future, we could come to a clear decision with the trade. And then we will initiate the legislative process. And we hope that soon after the recess, you, the legislative proposal could be passed. Then we could launch a new scheme in the shortest possible span of time. We try to, you know, shorten the time as far as possible. Now, for the existing scheme, what will happen? Our view is this, the scheme will end on the thirtieth of June. There may be a need for any bridging arrangement. That is, if we could come to an agreement with the trade very soon and then we could come to Lashco to legislate and seek funding, then it could be very quick.
Well, it depends on when the bureau submits the paper to the F C. We, members do not have to go to the council meetings right off. And now we have more time to maneuver. Having heard from views expressed on the Euro two, replacement of Euro two vehicles, I don't think anyone is against the additional funding application. Now, for the first set of paper, members express different views, but no one said that the matter should not be taken to F C, not for the first item. When we report to the F C, of course, we will, at that time, we will also relate members' concern on the occasion. I don't quite understand you, Chair Lady. Are you saying that the two sets of paper should be brought to F C before we hold the public hearing? For the second item, the second set of paper, I think we can do that because I haven't heard anyone objecting to that. Now, for the first set of paper, we have to understand from the bureau when they will submit the paper to F C. For the first set, we still have time for that. Chair Lady, I do not object to taking the paper, the second set of paper to F C because most members support the scheme. Whereas for this first item, members have worries, concerns, and we may have to negotiate with the trade. Now, if the trade do not have a chance to express their views at Lashco, it's not right. And anyone from the trade can come to public hearing of Lashco. If they simply go to F C with the first set of paper without listening to the trade, I think it is a problem. All right, I'll, I was going to ask about the timetable, but since you raised it and we still have Mr. Sin Chung Kai waiting to ask questions. Let's talk about the timetable first. For the first set of paper, when do you propose to submit it to F C? Thank you for members' views. We propose to deal with the two sets of paper differently. For the second item, we're talking about an existing policy and we don't have lots of dissenting views and I don't think members object to the application. With your endorsement, we would like to submit the paper to F C as soon as possible so that we can get the funding approval as soon as possible. For the first set of paper, we understand that the trade still have lots of concerns and members have already raised many views, questions, and the panel proposes to hold a public hearing and we respect your decision. We would like to listen to more views. And after that, we will possibly enhance the scheme for your perusal before we go down the legislative path and also submit the paper to F C. We do not have any intention to submit the paper in July, to, to F C in July directly after today's discussion. But as soon as we get a consensus, I hope we can start the scheme soon. I have a proposal for the application for extra funding. The bureau can go by its timetable and submit the paper to F C. Now, this is about a voluntary scheme for the replacement of Euro two vehicles. But when we hold the public hearing, we cannot stop people from asking questions about Euro two vehicles, about this particular scheme. So will you consider changing the end date of the scheme, that is, the thirtieth of June? You may say you will shorten the vacuum period as far as possible, but still, there will be a vacuum period. Now, for the ten billion scheme, you have our in principle support, but there are many details that we are concerned with. Now, just to assure members, may I propose? Before submitting this paper to F C, the administration should come up to the panel, have another discussion first. If members agree to that, then let's make it that they have to come to the panel meeting before they submit the paper to F C. Next, Mrs. Sin Chung Kai.
Mr. Wu Chi Wei already expresses the views of Democratic Party on the two discussion items. We're talking about commercial vehicles today, but my concern is with buses, especially K M B. The buses have been on the road for over ten years, seventeen, eighteen years. The total emission of their fleet must be higher than unusual commercial vehicles because the buses keep driving down the road. Let's say they have to work with the government in terms of the return, the revenue in that case. It's going to benefit the public, but I don't see the administration considering that. Now, coming back to the two sets of papers, the schemes were proposed or started by the previous administration. I wouldn't say they are now left in a mess, but in any event, the current administration is there to continue with these schemes in that case. Will you come up with something new, some new policy targeting buses?
will you come up with something new, some new policy targeting buses? Central cause way bay, Shengwen, Chim Sha Chui, Mong Kok, for all these crowded areas. The roadside air pollution is serious. Secretary, you said that we have to tackle this problem. I, I agree with you. But how can we come up with the most effective scheme plan to deal with that? I think it's more effective to spend the ten billion dollars to replace the existing buses, rather than spend the amount on diesel commercial vehicles. Now, people are complaining that the payment, the grant is too low. If people are not happy with Microsoft, does it mean that Microsoft have to give them some grant? Give them compensation, refund? Now, members of the public have to bear the pollution, but now they have to pay for the grant. Can you spend the amount on buses? I don't know if it's happening around the world, you can come up with studies to see if that's the case. I know that Shenzhen, Australia, Germany, liquefied natural gas is being used for buses. The emission is lower with L N G when compared to L P G. And you have to look at the technical side. Say, you can ask E M S D to look at the technical side. Several years ago, there were studies saying that L N G vehicles are not going to work. But now, several years have passed, shouldn't you look at it again? We have several bus operators in Hong Kong. They can always buy a L N G bus, and then you can give them some grant. In that case, people will pay less in terms of fare. And you only have to negotiate with three operators only. Secretary. Thank you, Mister Xin, you're talking about something really broad. Let me give you a brief reply. We have a blueprint for clean air, and we understand that diesel commercial vehicles' total emission is greater, way greater than that by buses. Air pollution has been in Hong Kong for a long time, especially roadside air pollution. So we have to tackle taxis, minibus, buses, and diesel commercial vehicles. We have to tackle them in tandem, so that we can achieve the new A Q O in twenty twenty. Air pollution in Hong Kong is very serious, that's why we have to adopt multi-pronged approach. May I suggest we extend the meeting by ten minutes? And we have to draw a line here, Mister Lo Wai Kau and Mister Wu Chi Wei. Still waiting to speak. Mister Lo, sorry, I was at the Boots Committee meeting, so I'm only here now. May I ask questions? Even if they have been asked before, my apologies. First, I want to say I support the one-off grant to the replacement of Euro two vehicles. I support the extra funding application. For the financial commitment, it's already exceed. You expect that the amount will exceed the previous funding. And you expect there will be more applications after the thirtieth of June, which is your deadline. It's good, and I understand that the target participation rate of twenty four percent is going to be exceeded. So you get the support from the trade. In that case, I think it warrants our support. Now, this is not a new initiative. This is an existing policy which has been running for three years. At the public hearing, deputations may talk about this scheme. But I don't think it is exactly directly related to our endorsement of the additional funding application. In that case, I think the paper should be submitted to F C as soon as possible. For the ten billion scheme, it's more controversial. When it was announced, it got lots of applause. But when it comes to implementation, it seems that there are lots of controversies, and different stakeholders are trying to fight for more advantages. I don't agree paying more to more polluting vehicles. Pre-Euro vehicles, they are already, they have already been on the road for eighteen, fifteen years. You have to shoulder social, social responsibilities. That means you cannot allow old vehicles to be on the road for so long, not just for emission purposes, but also from the safety point of view. If the vehicle can't be repaired, then it should be replaced. It's actually good for the commercial sector. So I agree with the government's logic, and I'm happy to listen to deputations, but I'd just like to express my views here. Any replies, Mister Li? To respond to Mister Lo's point, you got it spot on. We applied for five hundred forty million dollars. But as of April this year, we have already spent more or less that amount, because we have already granted five thousand odd applications. And we still have over a thousand outstanding applications amounting to one hundred and six million dollars. So we cannot really pay for all the applications. And the deadline is only the thirtieth of June, and we expect more applications. That's why we have this extra application. So one hundred twenty million dollars is enough for you? We have already included the contingency. Thank you. And Mister Wu Chi Wei has stepped outside, let's conclude this item. A summary. The for the one, the ten billion scheme, members express different views. We have in principle support here. But we ask the administration, before they submit paper to F C, they should come to this panel for another discussion. For the second item, replacement of Euro two vehicles, the extra funding application, we think the paper can be submitted to F C. Thank you for coming.